Good evening, everyone. Clock on the wall says it's 6:00 PM, so it is time for the regular October City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission meeting. And I will officially call us to order. Please read the roll, Ms. Melissa.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. We're all present and accounted for. Approval of agendas. Folks, do we have any additions, corrections, changes to the agenda? Okay, we're good for the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Third.
Don't fight over it. And we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Minutes from the September meeting. Any additions, corrections, changes, et cetera? Or did Melissa do her usual wonderful job?
Yeah. Well, that's just that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to expand the approval motion I'm going to give in a moment for the minutes. It was striking as I read the minutes for the past one, which we're approving tonight, just how accurate, how neutral, and how focused and comprehensive Ms. G- excuse me, Gullough's minutes are, besides pronouncing her name. But it struck me, in all our planning commission meetings, we have members of the city residents here tonight with us, and there's some of the meetings get pretty heated, some of the meetings get very somewhat pitchforks and things like that. And yet, every time I read these minutes, they're not only accurate and comprehensive, but they're neutral. They don't have a feeling of emotion. They're just something that you can go back to a month or two or three later, and you know you're going to get the straight scoop without any of the hyperbole that goes on. So our last meeting that we had that we're about to approve right now is one of those meetings, and it was just communicated in the same factual, comprehensive, and kind of neutral manner that she always does so well on. So I just wanted to call attention just how good she's doing a job to support us. And it really is a reinforcement of why the meeting minutes are just so automatically approved. And I don't want to let it go by one more time.
And she got that all down?
Yes. Yeah. For the record.
Does that mean you're moving to...
Yes. So as a result of that, I would like to make a motion to approve Ms. Gullough's minutes for September 3rd meeting.
I second everything you said. End of the approval of the minutes.
Thank you. And I will add my two cents on, as long as I've been here. Melissa hasn't been quite here quite that long, but like they said on Dragnet, just the facts, man.
Just the facts. Just the facts, man.
And she does a wonderful job, and we're most appreciative. But this ain't her first rodeo, believe me. Okay. By general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, this evening, we have one public hearing, one decision item, and a subdivision. So without further ado, let's start with a public hearing, just so you all will know. You know, we got to untable it. But before we start that, the way we run our public hearings is the applicant will give their presentation, then staff will do their presentation. At that point, we'll open the floor to anyone from the public who would like to give their input. Once all that input is done, we'll see if there's any written input, then close the public hearing, and we will discuss among ourselves, and hopefully come up with a decision. So, we need to untable this from last month. I need a motion for that, please.
I make a motion, we untable the public PUD 25-3 SSP number one.
Okay.
From the last meeting.
Second up.
I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Everybody good with that? Okay, now you can read it.
This is case number PUD 25-3, specific site plan number one, on an application filed by Josh Long, 250 Civic Center Drive, Suite 500, Columbus, Ohio 45432. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 510 square foot beverage business with associated drive-through on 0.64 acres. The property is located at 3919 Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book One, Page 9, Parcel 44, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here from the applicant's side?
Yes, good evening. My name is Jonathan Woker. I'm a planner with McBride Dale Clarion. I do have a brief presentation, if you'll bear with me. And as was mentioned, this is a request for a specific site plan number one for the PUD. I do have Josh Long with me tonight. He's with Commercial Site Acquisitions, Casto Properties. And so I'll go through my presentation. I do know that staff is going to go through the application in detail, so I'll skip a lot of those details. I will also note that we tabled this from the last meeting so that we could work with staff, and we feel like that extra 30 days got us to the point where we can now say we're good with the conditions with one minor comment. So 3919 is the site location. We're on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway, also on the north side of Germany Lane. This was approved as a PUD in August. It's an existing vehicle sales lot, relatively small, 0.64 acres, and proposed use is Seven Brew Coffee Drive-Thru. This is that property. So at the top of the slide, you can see Colonel Glenn Highway, and then at the middle bottom is Germany Lane. We are that triangular-shaped property, 0.64 acres. And as you can see, it's irregularly shaped, and there's an existing car lot there. The plan would be to demolish that building. I will point out the driveways that are on Colonel Glenn today will not be there as part of our plan. This is the survey of the property. Again, we would demolish the existing structures, and our plan is to build a new Seven Brew coffee store at this location. There would be an entrance on Germany Lane. That's the furthest to the east away from the intersection. That entrance would be a one-way-in-only. And you can see we have our dumpster circulation access there, as well as our parking area. We would have a double drive-thru lane. And you can see at the top of the slide, on the Colonel Glenn side, there's a canopy where our customers would pick up their beverages. As you may know, with Seven Brew, they have an order point either at the building, at the pickup window, or they have employees that take your order through the line with touchpads. So they pride themselves in being quick turnaround of the service, and a lot of that has to do with not having food. So it allows them to process orders quickly and move through. And then the other driveway would be an exit-only. So one-way circulation around the site. This is the same plan that you saw as a concept plan. We've just been working through some details on that. We think this is a good fit for the property. Again, it is consistent with the concept plan, and this, we think, will be complementary to the commercial uses on Colonel Glenn, as well as the volume of traffic that's there. I mentioned we've been working with staff on the site design. We've been working to justify our stacking, as well as access, and we are requesting that Planning Commission recommend approval with the conditions. We do agree with the conditions of approval. However, I would ask that you consider modifying Condition 12. I know you haven't seen those yet, but I'm going to go ahead and talk about that. That has to do with the recommendation for internal downspouts. This is the condition as written on the top, and we would ask that the commission considered modifying that to say gutters and downspouts be painted to match the internal, to match the building material to which they are attached. Making the downspouts internal to the building is a real difficulty for us. Part of that has to do with the fact that this is a modular building, and so we have -- this is not stick-built and made on-site. These are the plans that were submitted. You also have a picture that I took from the staff report. That's a picture of the North Fairfield site that exists. We are building the same store, same design and image that's at the North Fairfield store. And with that, there's a little bit of shadow on here, but this is the back of the building. There are two downspouts on the back of this building, and again, on the screen, it's not real clear. But you can see to the left, there's some openings. There's a downspout that's painted the same color as the building, and then the inside of the outdoor area where there's some mechanical equipment also has a gutter, I'm sorry, downspout. And we feel that if, that allowing us to paint that alleviates some significant hardship that making this internal would create. And again, it would be the same as you've seen at the North Fairfield, and we believe our customers are pretty satisfied with that. So I would ask that consideration. We are acceptable to the other conditions that staff has presented. As I mentioned, we've worked with the city engineer pretty extensively on some site and circulation issues, and we think we've come to good solutions there. So thank you for your time.
Did you bring coffee? We asked you last time to bring coffee.
I drank it, and that's why I'm so caffeinated now. Perhaps next time. Thank you.
Thank you. We will most likely have some questions for you.
Thanks, sir.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Jonathan stole half my presentation, so I'll try to go through this fairly quickly here. Again, this is PUD 25-3. It was a new PUD that was created earlier this year, rezoned from a B2 neighborhood business district to a PUD. And they're requesting, again, to construct a Seven Brew. It's two buildings combined total of 790 square feet. There's the main building, and then the cooler building. We're in northern, far northern Beaver Creek, and the applicant had already showed the existing site with the several cars. And any redevelopment of the site, I think, will aesthetically be a major improvement to the area. Just to the east of that is another portion of the auto dealer, and that was approved. Planning Commission City Council approved a Valvoline quick change in the last couple of months. So when both of these come together, or should both of these be constructed, I think it would be a major improvement to this corner here. Again, the property is zone CPUD 25-3, and again, the conditions in the PUD allow for a restaurant with drive-thru to be located on-site. As the applicant pointed out here, this is the proposed site plan. You can see to the western, southwestern corner of the site is where the entrance to the site will be. And then they've got enough parking for their employees. The unique business model is there's no indoor or outdoor seating. They do offer some walk-ups, but that's a rarity. So really, with the maximum employees on the shift, they have enough parking to account for all their employees. And this is just a kind of, did a colorized version to give you a better idea of how that would look, overlayed with the existing aerial. One of the biggest concerns with any drive-thru, particularly one that would have cars backing out onto public right-of-way, is the stacking. And so you go through the zoning code. The code requires, for this particular business, 10 stacking spaces, and I do this with just assume that cars were 19 by 9, and I was able to fit 21 cars on-site before they got to the edge of the site. Plus, we also added a proposed condition resolution that states that Seven Brew, or the owner occupant, occupers of the building will be responsible to ensure that nobody's waiting out on public roads, and it'll be up to them to shoo them off, tell them to come back when there's room for them. The police would do that, too, and ticket anybody who parks, goes out into the road. But really, we want to put it on the business owners, since they would be there. They'll be there. And so there's that condition in place to help prevent, and in the worst possible-case scenario, cause them to move customers along, so we don't get the stacking. Also, one of the conditions, and this is an extension, when Valvoline went in, we had them add a sidewalk on the southern end of their site. So we had a condition that they put a four-foot sidewalk along this southern and around the corner of their site to connect to the existing sidewalk on Colonel Glenn. It's like, it's one of those, we get everybody to do the sidewalk, and eventually they all connect together. So now we'll be able to get from Colonel Glenn all the way down to pretty much, almost close to Zinc Road. I don't know if it's easier to see on this. You'll be able to get to that, close to Zinc Road. There is sidewalk on the south side of the street in front of Project Promotum to the south. Get back to where I was. When we were reviewing the site, one of the city engineers' concerns was cars coming off of Colonel Glenn and turn right onto Germany Lane. If you have cars stacking to go left onto Colonel Glenn, and they're stacked back, you won't be able to see past them if you're coming out of the site, because the exit site, you know, is right only 90, 70, and 90 feet away from that intersection. So we sent it out to a third-party engineer and got their recommendation, a separate party, so that we have, you know, unbiased information. And their recommendation, well, they acknowledged that, you know, that it does present challenges. The site is a challenging site, being triangular. One of their recommendations that we make, Colonel, Germany Lane be a right out onto Colonel Glenn only, so in theory, you can get cars faster through that intersection rather than having to wait to go left. So there's a condition that the applicant worked with the senior engineer to build this as part of their project. Of course, they already stated they agree to this. This is just my schematic. I don't know if there'd be any grass around, if that's practical to begin with. I just thought it would look better with some multiple colors. But something similar to this, or some way to prevent cars, or highly discourage cars from trying to make a left out on the Colonel Glenn. Again, the applicant, as the applicant stated, this is going to be a mirror of the existing building on North Fairfield Road. And this is a picture you already saw, because you stole it from me. But yeah, this is the existing one on North Fairfield Road. You can see the multi, the tan brick on the top and the dark slate brick on the bottom, and then the several different colors of metal as accent features. So no surprises or questions about the architecture of the building. It's something that we've seen and continue to see in the city. In terms of landscaping, I mean, if you compare what there is now with like no landscaping at all, any landscaping would be great, and what they're proposing is a good landscaping plan. You can see some mulch beds on the southern end of the southern portion of the site, along the northern property line, and then a various mixture of shrubs and trees and bushes and grasses throughout the mulch beds, and then a few scattered throughout the site. In terms of lighting, a few wall pack lighting on the building, and then under the canopy, and then there's some pole-mounted fixtures out on the parking lot. Reviewing the preliminary lighting plan, didn't see any concerns with what they're proposing, these full cutoff LED fixtures. Just to go through a few conditions in the proposed resolution. One is the impact fees are applicable to the site. The final calculation is based on its square footage, and so we'll go through, that's kind of the next step. If, should this be approved by City Council, then we'd go and, when they get to the permitting stage, we'd figure out a list of all the fees and bonds, and get that to them before we'd release a zoning permit. Again, they'll be responsible for making sure that vehicles aren't queuing out onto Germany Lane. Any of the mechanical equipment, I believe it's roof-mounted, but any of that needs to be screened by the roof forms. If they do go with ground-mounted equipment, then they'll have to use landscaping to screen that. And also, and we did this with the other Seven Brew and most PUDs within the city, is that no temporary signs be permitted within the development. So Planning Commission, or Planning Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to the 19 conditions found in your staff report. And we're happy to answer any questions following the hearing.
Thank you very much. The usual, very comprehensive report from staff. It's public hearing time. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak for, against, or ask questions? Don't be shy. Okay, seeing none, did we have any written input? Okay, last chance. I'll close the public hearing. And I promised our newest member I would not start with her, so I'll start with my vice chairman.
Randy, question? So about the downspouts. I went back and looked. We had Condition 14 last time for the North Fairfield location. Gutters and downspouts should not be visible on any elevation of the building, and they shall be internally mounted. So what happened with that, then?
One of those things where we didn't notice it until...
Okay. So anyway, the point is, then, this, what, the conditions we have is compatible, or it's the same as what we had last time?
Yeah. And as you notice on that, I mean, they're really hard to see.
Yeah.
They would be basically on the east end of this building, so you, it would be challenging to see with the landscaping, but I mean, I'll defer that to Planning Commission, whether they keep that in or not.
Okay. Because I know we've had multiple cases in the past where applicants have asked for...
Some buildings are really challenging to internally mount them. These precast buildings are particular, modular buildings are particularly challenging, just because they show up like that. And so to add one, I mean, there's options you can do, but really, to make the building look very similar to the one that's out there now, I mean, it would be challenging.
Okay. So then, I don't know if this would be more on the city to do, but, so like a sign that says, "Don't block the intersection," or like on the exit? So a sign on Germany Lane that says, "Don't block the intersection," so people can continue to get out, just in case, for some reason, that Germany Lane backed up?
Yeah, I mean...
That's what the city would do?
That could be. Our third-party engineer recommended we don't put signage out on Germany Lane. It said it, it just becomes a distraction, and nobody listens to it anyways.
Okay.
And really, the onus is on the drivers coming out, for them to yield to the existing ride, the existing traffic. So I mean, we don't want to create a situation where they think, someone might think, "Well, I've got a sign, am I right?" Or things like that. So that was the third-party recommendation. That's just a recommendation.
I guess my concern was if Germany Lane backed up, right, then people couldn't get out of Seven Brew. And then stacking becomes now an issue, right? If they can't get out.
Sure. And that's, I mean, that would be, it would be better to have cars move freely on the right-of-way than the cars move freely in the site. And that's where, just like if you go in the mall, the stop signs, they're all, it can be confusing. But when you go in the mall, there are no stop signs, so some people stop, some people don't, because you want traffic to get out off the public right-of-way as fast as possible. And internally is where, I mean, congestion, you know, is not good, but it's worse out on the public right-of-ways.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Yeah, question, and this is kind of too hypotheticals here. Assume that this goes in, assume the Valvoline goes in, to drive-thru services. Are there any, I don't know if you talked with the third-party engineer about any amplification of traffic from both of those operating at the same time?
I mean, that wasn't addressed specifically with our engineer. Both are required to contain their traffic on-site and not allow spillage. I mean, we had a very similar condition with Valvoline. Seven Brew, while I surmise that they're, they've got hotspot times in the morning, and then that's when they get their most business, and maybe in the evening, whereas Valvoline is more sporadic. And when we, I went on the same traffic, stacking standards with them, and they're just kind of dumbfounded, because they don't, they would never expect to have that many people there at once.
Yeah.
And with that kind of business, if you see, if you think you're going to wait for 35 minutes...
You're going to go.
You're not going to go, because it's not a quick change anymore. So being that they're self, it's self-sustaining, I wouldn't see that they would amplify each other.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number of questions, eventually we'll get to the traffic question, but these are just some discrepancies, Randy, maybe you can address them. So the applicant submitted a set of plans that we all had a chance to look at, and he submitted two C2.1s. One was preliminary, and one was the approved final, both with the same date, but with different information. And I wondered why we got both C2s submitted. Assume you go with the later C2.1, but at the same time, they do say different information.
The second C2, if you notice, that was primarily so that they can show the distances of the car stacking. Just because you need 20-foot for cars, so they just wanted to show, that was for stacking purposes only.
So for purposes of what we're approving from a site plan standpoint, I hate to say it this way, I don't know how else to say it, but I know Melissa will capture it in the minutes like she does so well. We are ignoring the first C2.1, and we are approving the second C2.1.
I believe that...
Because they both have the same date, same description.
I believe one of the C1s, and let me get to it. I believe one says for stacking purposes only.
I'm just looking at the official demarcations on the right-hand side. They convey different information, and it's going to get to, when I start talking about traffic, am I supposed to totally ignore the first one and agree to the second one?
Yeah, the second C2, if you notice in the top left-hand corner, it says conceptual reference stacking.
Correct. Yeah, it definitely says conceptual, but it's identified engineering-wise, and it's from a certified engineer, the exact same way.
No, I get it, but for that particular one, you're only looking at the numbers...
Okay.
The distances for the stacking.
Okay. I know this is trivial, but being a registered architect myself, and the professional engineer doing these drawings, Melissa, if we could put in the minutes that we are accepting the second C2.1 site plan as the final comprehensive version, and the first C2.1 is only for stacking?
Yes.
Descriptions? Okay. For record purposes only?
Certainly.
In the meeting minutes? Thank you for that.
Or we can just get rid of the second...
Or get rid of it, yeah.
Get rid of the one that is stacking on it. It's not. It was morally for your own reference.
Okay. Then, before I get to my exit in the island situation, which is my third question, the second one has to do with the limited, if any, walk-up. And let's assume that, for whatever reason, I can't envision why, but somebody actually wants to park their car and walk up. Assuming they could do that. Or somebody has to leave early, that's an employee, whatever. Knowing how well the one in North Fairfield is doing, assuming this would be just as well, because it's even closer to base, who supplies most of the coffee drinkers in Beaver Creek. How are they going to get out, except for going through the vehicle canopy, which is already servicing a group of cars? There's no reverse way out, except if you're the trash servicing company in the lower corner. So how is that going to happen without creating unusable situations for the people that need to leave but are not there to buy coffee? They have to go through the vehicle canopy, or not?
Yeah, they'll just have to go through the drive-thru. I mean, the site...
Because there's no drive-around, like you see at any of the other...
No, there's no bypass lane.
There's no room to do it, like you do have in North Fairfield.
Correct.
And is that something you and the applicants have talked about on the occasion when someone actually has to leave, and they're already stacked two, three, four, or five deep?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, in reality, the only people, I mean, there might be an occasional guests parked there, but really, there's...
Or even an employee changing shifts, or something.
I mean, that'll be on them to make sure they get out through the drive-thru lane.
Well, the reason I'm saying this, knowing how creative people can be, I can see them parking a Valvoline and walking over, or an employee parking a Valvoline, just because they've learned with 15, 10, 15 cars stacking, there's no way I'm going to get out, because it's too successful. And I've seen that in North Fairfield, but because it's in the middle of the massive parking lot, there are other ways to get around.
Well, in that one, there's also a reciprocal parking agreement, where anybody in that development can park in anywhere, and they can use...
Really?
Cross-parking agreements. Here, Valvoline, whatever, every rights say you can't park there, we'll tell you if you do. Whereas in shopping center, there's not that...
Okay.
...that ability. With this one, it's just, I mean, in a perfect world, if we had the room, I'd love to have a bypass lane, but this site is just not letting itself.
It's just not going to happen, huh? All right. Then if I could, Mr. Chairman, my last question. This has to do with, we go back to the island. So there's a new condition you gave us, which was not in our packet, which is Condition number 19. So looking at 19 now, which was not in the packet then, I was sent on Friday. I was sent up to 18. So it's in there now. Okay, it wasn't, it's in the packet I have in front of me, but it wasn't the packet I got on Friday. I had up to 18 conditions.
I'm not sure how that...
So anyway, that's fine. But, so here's a couple of questions I had. Knowing that we're going to be taking traffic and having them turn right as they exit, since it's all traffic, and since, if I'm reading 19 correctly, it says the installation of necessary signage, I'm assuming the necessary signage has to do with the turning right, and not signage advertising Seven Brew?
Correct. Yeah, that would be necessary signage, where you would put it like at the end of the, either in it, or...
The little right arrow, or black arrow.
Did a really dirty arrow on the line.
Got it. And the other question I had is, given the success of Seven, North Fairfield, which it is, and the proverbial success on this one, picking up the traffic going to the base, which is going to be west or to the left of that drawing, if most of the traffic coming in off of Zinc Road into Seven Brew is then exiting and having to turn the opposite way they were going, which was towards the base, are we, in effect, exchanging one solution of a problem for a new problem, which is now everybody's going to be going and doing a U-turn? Which is now everybody's going to be going and doing a U E or a loop, or maybe having to go to Meyer and work their way back to National Road.
What we'd envision they would do would be go, um, sorry.
Because I'm assuming the base will be a significant portion of the traffic for Seven Brew.
Right state or the base. But yeah, you, once you exit the site, you would leave left on the site and go up to Zinc Road where you have a light to go left onto, I mean, you kind of backtrack a little bit. But other than turning right and doing a U turn in Meyer, which I think would take even longer, I think it'd be better just to go out to Zinc Road and make a left on.
I, I understand. Yeah. It's just, I'm just looking at potential customers, North Fairfield, customers from everywhere. But if you're in Colonel Glenn, you're at Colonel Glenn either east side because of right state or west side, because you're heading up to National Road for the base. And it just makes me think we traded one issue for another issue, especially with the traffic.
I think it, it, it funnels people down over to the traffic light rather than trying to make a left without a traffic light, which is a lot more dangerous. You know, if, if even possible on Colonel Glenn, knowing the, the volumes of traffic on there.
But if that's, if you guys found that acceptable, I know it's a, a tricky issue. Uh, and you didn't want people turning left so much to come into that. But, uh, okay. That was my question. I just trade off one to the other and I thought, okay. But that is question nine area, excuse me. Condition 19 does relate to just that island. With the design and the width and all that, basically it's taking away the left turn lane for anybody on.
Correct.
Germany.
That's the intent. I mean, you can't outplan people, some creative people that willing to jump.
Yeah. Yeah. Without coffee at six 45 in the morning.
If you're late, you might jump a curve. I don't know.
Okay.
The intent is to try to encourage people to not go left.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now it's your turn.
Thank you. I'm sure this has been accounted for, but, um, looking at the plan and how we were talking about cars exiting, where, assuming a full lot, where would a delivery truck be able to park and unload?
Yeah. I mean, well, they're, A, they would need to be doing it before after hours. There's no way they'd be able to fit in there and either pull into the drive through lane, whether there's nobody there when it's closed or before it opens, or use the, the pull in for the trash dumpster. But, I mean, that's deep enough where you could get a truck to sit there and they could walk it over to the cooler, which is just only 10, 12 feet away. Uh, but I, I, the applicants here, if you want to get a specific, more specific answer, but that's, that's my.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm reading it.
That's all.
Um, I have a few questions. Uh, could you put the photo up of the, uh, of the North Fairfield Road? The one, the one they pirated from you. There we go.
Hang it.
Um, the, the two blue posts on the right have legs at the bottom. Are those the, by chance, the downspouts? Maybe, maybe our applicant would, would know that.
They.
There are two blue posts that are supporting the canopy and they have little legs at the bottom that look suspiciously like the bottoms of downspouts. Is that what they are?
I don't know for sure. I would agree with your suspicion, but I don't know 100%.
Uh, and, and as long as you're up there.
I'm sorry. They, and looking at this picture, my understanding with those would be inside the canopy or inside that column.
Okay.
Till they get to the bottom.
Okay.
But again, I don't know that for sure, but that's my interpretation.
Okay. So, and, and my question is on your sites, do you normally, since you do have downspouts, uh, whether they be internal or external, uh, they all flow underground. That you don't have a spillage out across the driveway or anything like that. I'm thinking about freezing weather and, and having an ice rink on your, in your parking lot.
I don't know that we have a standard because sometimes we probably do have some surface flow, but we'll, we'll definitely meet standards with your.
Okay.
Engineer.
Okay.
It's relatively small site for detention, but.
And, and the site on North Fairfield does have external downspouts?
It does.
Okay. I just wanted to make, make, make sure that we're clear. Uh, you're, you're figuring the, the, um, employee parking will be along that east side on the side closest to Valvoline?
Correct.
Okay. What's your turn time normally? From the time somebody pulls up to the order line to the time they pick up their, their product?
They, they've told me they try and do that in under two minutes. So like a minute and a half to three minutes.
Okay.
So, you know, in the discussion about someone trying to get out, worst case scenario is they may have to wait 10 minutes. You know, that's not optimal, but that would be if you've got both lanes, both full. You know, because our, our goal would be to have customers being served within one to two minutes.
Right.
And part of that is the, the ordering point. So being able to order by the time you get to the window, we've got more than one staff inside. So it's not just a person doing the, the service and the, the beverage filling. You've got people doing multiple tasks inside. So, um, you're able to make the flow quicker.
So the two order lanes actually flow to a single pickup window?
Correct.
Okay. Looking at my notes here, the, um, what are, what are your hours that you're looking at?
Uh, so we just looked at one at Fairfield, I believe is 5:30 to 10. Um, the manager and the franchisees have some flexibility depending on demand. So if, if that's too early or too late, you know, but I, I, my understanding is typically, you know, six-ish to nine-ish, but, but that one at Fairfield is 5:30 to 10.
So it's, it's strictly morning. You, you're not.
I'm sorry, 10 P M.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's through the day.
Okay.
It's through the day. But our, our peak is definitely in the morning.
Sure.
And then we get another peak in the afternoon when people need another cup of coffee.
Okay. And, um, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, just as a, as a comment to my fellow commissioners, this particular site is not in the middle of a shopping center, uh, like the one on North Fairfield, uh, that might well have walk up traffic. Uh, I would think the only walk up traffic for this one would be somebody getting their oil changed next door. And hey, I'll pop over and get a cup of coffee while I'm waiting for my oil change. Uh, so you might, you may well have some, a, a few walk ups, but, uh, not, not very many. Okay, gentlemen, ladies. Second helpings.
Sorry, I do have one more for, I think it's probably for staff. The lighting that they're proposing, um, considering that they're going to have employees out in the parking lot, taking orders when it's dark out, do you feel that the lighting is adequate enough to support safety for those that are out there?
Yeah. I mean, you look at the, the foot candles, which is the, the, it's the number by which you rate how bright something is. Um, we require in normal areas of operation, like driveways, drive, uh, any of that kind of stuff, out in the minimum of one, and they meet that. It, Colonel Glenn's pretty bright street in itself too. Um, and I believe that they wear very reflective clothing, um, for the evening hours. But, uh, I'm not concerned with the light levels, um, in particular with this. I mean, with Valvoline, with Colonel Glenn, it's a pretty bright area to begin with.
Thank you.
Sure.
I am Mike.
Like Mike.
Mike, Mike. Do we have a requirement for the, the lead off out of the downspouts on a commercial building like this? So we don't have, uh, a problem with, with water running across the, the driveways and freezing in the winter time? I'm all for, you know, with global warming, we may not have any more snow, but I kind of doubt it.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I don't think that there's any, like, anything in any ordinance that says you can't allow water to flow into the drive aisles. There's certainly something that they can talk with our engineering department, see if we can get addressed and see if we can direct a flow.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it would be, it would be good from the, from the applicant's standpoint. Not to have, not to have that, we've all walked across a parking lot and, and found a slippery spot and it's, it's from a downspout.
Yeah, it'd be an ocean nightmare, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Not to mention the employees.
That's what I mean. Yeah.
They'll have to wear ice skates. Okay. I just, just wondered if we had any, I didn't remember anything specific in the zoning code like that, but.
No, there's, uh, not that I am aware of.
Well, I, I trust staff will, will, will work that out.
Do our best with that.
Okay. Anything else, folks? Then I, I need a motion. First of all, does anybody want to correct, uh, number 12 about the, speaking of downspouts, about the downspouts?
Can we go back to the slide that had what the applicants proposed, uh, condition number 12 looked like? And I would, just for consistency sake, I know North Fairfield, we did have the same 12 condition as stated here, but for consistency sake and due to modularity, I would propose to modify condition number 12 to match as stated.
Okay. We'll, we'll need, we'll need that as a, as a modification.
Yeah.
And we'll vote on that. And then if it passes, we vote on it as, as modified.
Yep. Uh, so motion to modify condition number 12 to read requested modification, condition number 12, uh, gutters and downspouts shall be painted to match the building material to which they are attached.
Okay. I have a motion. Mike.
Thank you, Steve. In the current condition of, of the North Fairfield, uh, they do have, as we just found out, internally, uh, mounted, uh, gutters. They're for the support posts for the canopy. And then on the building itself, because it's modular, they have externally mounted. And so they have, and they're showing it on the drawings that we're approving tonight. So somehow I just want to say that all external building mounted gutters shall be painted to match the building unless internally mounted. Because I don't want to lose that they're going to internally mount the supports, which is what you found out and asked for when you looked at the picture. So I'm kind of tweaking what Jacob was saying.
Yeah. I mean, you can just change it to get gutters and downspouts that are on the.
External.
Outside of the bill, or, or.
That are visible.
Gutters and downspouts that are externally mounted shall be painted.
There we go.
To match the building materials.
Jacob, would you accept that?
Are you happy with that, Jacob?
I am happy with that.
Good.
And I second that.
And we have a second and.
Thank you.
Let's read the roll on this.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Okay. So we now have a modified, um, approval here. So I need a motion for that. Approve it as, approve that, to approve as modified.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 25 dash three, SSP number one with the 19 conditions as modified.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Read the roll.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries five zero and we will be looking forward to, uh, getting at another coffee place. Okay. Moving right along. Um, our second, uh, item tonight is, uh, PUD oh three dash four, minor modification to Tavernier Salon. You don't have anything, but I bet staff does.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Colin Carville. I am the city planner for the city of Beaver Creek. Um, I will be do, taking care of the presentation for both the applicant and, uh, city staff here. The applicant, uh, has a team here that can answer any questions after the fact. So, um, jumping right in, uh, we are here for a minor modification. Um, the applicant is requesting a, uh, a basically a 2,200 square foot salon expansion, um, to their site located at four, one, two, four Colonel Glenn Highway. Um, that sits on 2.454 acres. Uh, just to get our bearings here, that's in our northwest part of the city, kind of similar area where we were working with at the last case, um, just off of Colonel Glenn Highway there. Here's a look at the current site, um, and pay particular attention to that green space just north of the, uh, the existing building. That's kind of where the, uh, expansion will be taking place, um, in that green space there. A little background on, uh, the site itself, um, it was a rezone from B two to PUD oh three, four in 2003. Um, it was originally intended to be a, uh, uh, car wash, um, but that didn't, those plans fell through. Uh, and Tavernier stepped up and, uh, they built and purchased the lot and built their, uh, 3,644 square foot salon. Um, the, uh, site is, was designed that I'll show in the second, uh, slide, uh, for future expansion, uh, which is detailed in the, uh, next slide. Um, and the request kind of qualifies as a modification because they specifically called out, um, at that time for that expansion. Um, typically from the square footage side of things, uh, it would rise to a, a major modification, but because it was called out in those, uh, previous plans, staff was comfortable with, uh, moving this forward with a minor modification. So as you can see on the left side there were the previously approved plans, um, in 2004, um, on that northern side, uh, of that site plan, you can see it calls for that future expansion. Um, and then this is kind of the site plan that we're working with this evening, um, on the right there. Uh, and as you can see, it's pretty much mirrors slightly, slightly larger than, um, that, that previous iteration, but, uh, pretty close to what they're looking for. Um, the only addition, um, or only kind of change from that site plan is a little additional parking. That was more of a staff request than what the applicant was proposing, just so it would meet our, our base standards here. Um, and, and staff was comfortable with what they've provided. Uh, getting into the e- expansion itself, uh, as I mentioned, it's 2,200 square feet. Um, it'll create 11 new hairstyle rental stations. Um, that's kind of the concept that they're moving forward with. Where it'll have, uh, specific kind of private areas for, uh, different beauticians to, uh, to rent that space out, uh, from Taverniers and, and kind of operate within kind of their, their umbrella there. Um, it'll bring the total building size to 5,844 square feet. Um, we're continuing that salon use. Um, and you can see, uh, in kind of next slide, actually, that was blown up here. But you'll see a lot of kind of chairs, um, in here. Um, it's a little deceiving because there's a, a different kind of, it's kind of using the car wash scenario. They have areas to cut your hair, but those same people will be utilizing kind of the nail salon area, the, the shampooing stations. So it's not different people at each station. It's kind of just one, one, uh, you know, beautician working with a client, um, throughout kind of their visit there. So here's a look, uh, at the kind of internal, um, of what that will look like on the, uh, it's technically the northern side, but on the right side of your screen here, uh, those can, you can see those private rooms, um, designed there and, and as called out, there's 11, uh, new rooms there. So the main, main concern, um, from this addition was, was kind of the parking situation there. Um, uh, so our, our code is pretty, um, pretty strict with, or pretty, uh, requires pretty heavy, uh, parking space allotment. Um, it's three spaces per beauty chair, um, just with the intent of maybe someone's with them, taking them in. It's a, it's a little bit of a unique concept, uh, because adjacent to a, a barber where people are kind of going in and out, their clients are with them for three to four hours at a time. So there's not that quick overflow, uh, in and out that you'd see at a typical barber. So, even, even though, uh, you know, they, they do have that, they still will meet our, our parking requirements. So, um, from our staff's estimation, there'll be 24 separate, separate stations dedicated to different, uh, beauticians, um, working with clients. Um, not all of them will be on at the same shift, uh, but that we're just accounting for worst case scenario. I'm doing a little math there. Uh, 24 times three brings the space to 72. Uh, requirement to 72 with the 11 additional spaces, that brings their total count to 74. So they, they are exceeding and meeting our parking requirements and, and we're happy with that. So, and then finally the last slide here, um, they're not really reinventing the wheel as far as this addition is concerned. Um, they're mirroring what's existing, um, with kind of the same brick bottom, uh, wood siding above and a roof that matches the height and design. So, uh, it'll look very similar, just, you know, a lot more of it. So, uh, and the only really setback that we're concerned with here that's going to be changing would be that rear setback. Um, they're going to be 185 feet. It's a big lot from that rear side, uh, or from that rear setback. Um, and the requirement's 70 feet, so they vastly exceed that. So, uh, once again, the proposal is very consistent with, with the current building style, which we're, which we're pleased with. So, uh, staff will be recommending approval, uh, of the request, um, subject to the six conditions attached. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. Another very comprehensive report. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm just going to open this up. I'm just going to open this up. Questions? Comments?
So, on the parking?
Yeah.
Do we feel that 72 spaces is necessary? I mean, that seems like a lot of parking.
Yeah, I mean, it's a requirement, so we're planning for worst-case scenario here. They've shown me pictures that, you know, it's never really come to that point where they're, you know, busting at the seams for parking. But staff was just most comfortable with having those 11 additional spaces just to accommodate in case, you know, they... I mean, they've been a longstanding business in Beaver Creek, which we're really happy about. They're obviously a well-known name in the area. So, if this, the 11 new rooms really takes off and there's a really high demand there, we can't really foresee what will happen. So, we just want to plan for worst-case scenario. But I definitely see your point.
Just thoughts on making it like conditional, like if it's necessary, then they could add it later on instead of forcing them? I mean, I don't know if it's a sticking point or not.
I think from the city's perspective, it would be kind of hard to hold them to that. It would be just extra code enforcement from our officer and be complaint-driven. So, I think from the start here, I think we'd like to see that.
Okay. And then what about runoff? Where's... There's no pond, obviously, on this site, so where's all the water going?
So, because of the addition itself doesn't take rise to need those calculations done. I'll check with my engineer, but I remember walking it through and looking through the comments. He didn't have any concerns with it. So, I'm not... I can't tell you exactly where that water's going, but I think engineering is okay with where it is.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me stay on the parking issue. First off, to establish the 72 spaces, I'm looking with a packet that we received, two different site plans, and I'm wondering what is the correct site plan? There was parking in the back of the new addition, and there's parking only on the side. So, is that the correct site plan for where parking is going to be proposed?
Yeah, so I think where the confusion, I probably should have labeled those a little better. I think the site plan that you're looking at was probably those approved plans in 2004 that don't show...
So, well, so the one on the right, because they said they had 11 new spaces. I'm assuming that's the inside 11 spaces, because it's only 10 parking spaces.
It's technically... So, there's like a dumpster enclosure where...
Oh, that's the 11th.
Yeah, that's where they can kind of squeeze it in.
Well, then, let me ask it this way. Based on the state of Ohio handicap parking, they only have two... And I was out at the site as recently as yesterday. They only have two handicap parking spaces.
Okay.
If they're over 50 spaces, they have to have three.
Okay.
If they're over 75, they have to have four. So, you've kept them under the limit for four, which is good. But they still need one more handicap space. And do I need to make that a condition, that they bring up to handicap ADA standards? Or is that something you guys will just take care of?
As Mike pointed out, it's a state requirement, so it's not something that we would oversee, something that the state would have to impose.
Because right now, they only have two. They need at least three.
Sure.
So, do we, as a planning commission, make that a condition or not?
You don't have to make conditions for someone to be compliant with Ohio law. That's just... I think that's one of the things they're just expected to do, so that's not necessary.
So, when they're striping it... Well, as to the size of the space and everything else when they go through the striping, we assume that the state of Ohio will ensure that they have an adequately-sized and painted handicap space? Or will we expect our inspector to note that they've added a third space?
That will not be the problem of the city of Beaver Creek. If they're... Typically, the way that works is there would be a complaint, and then the city... Then the state would come in. I'm sure that they're going to try to avoid that by making sure they're meeting the requirements beforehand.
Well, at least in the comprehensive minutes we have, we noted that they need three handicap parking spaces. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Other comments? Questions? I just have... Go ahead. Fire away.
Sorry. I'm curious. So, staff has interpreted this requirement to apply to the existing 13 chairs. Was the three spots per chair an original requirement back in 2004?
I'm not sure how the code has evolved over time. So, I'm not... I'm just kind of looking at our current standards. And any type of new addition, that's what we have to hold them to. So, I'm not sure if they're compatible or if they overused spaces at that time. But, yeah, I just currently have to look at what we have, so...
Okay, thank you.
One quick question. I'm not sure if this is for you or for our applicant. Will there be an entrance or an exit out the back of the new addition?
Good evening. My name's David Helmers. I'm the architect working with the client. But yes, there's two new exits out the back.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I just... I can just picture these folks getting that nice new hairdo, getting absolutely drowned in a rainstorm, having to go all the way around the building. So, there will be an exit out the back. Great. All I wanted to know. Thank you. Okay, folks, if we have no more questions, I need a motion. And also, like a second.
Motion to approve PUD 03-4, minor modification for Tavernier Salon.
Second.
Okay, and...
With the attached six conditions.
And correctly, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but being a minor mod, this does not go forward to city council. This is us. So, without further ado, please read the roll.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
And I was thinking when I looked at this, oh, we just approved this a few years ago. And it was 22 years ago, but we're tickled to death y'all are doing so well and looking forward to seeing the new addition. Okay, one more item here, gentlemen. This is a... Looks like a lot split. S25-6?
Good evening, everyone. Colin Carville, city planner. We are working with Beaver Creek Town Center replat here, case number S25-6. Essentially, what's going on here? Kohl's is splitting off from the rest of the parcel and just kind of creating two parcels there. So, total area is 9.376 acres. The first parcel will be 7.312 acres, which will contain Kohl's and the corresponding parking lot that supplements Kohl's. And parcel two is 2.062 acres, which is home to the Witch Witch, and I believe, a nail salon and their corresponding parking. So, just kind of a split there. And all parcels remain currently zoned in the mixed PUD 93-4. And then there's just the look at our lot split there. You can see it's kind of taken place along that southwestern side of the lot there, so... Conditions are pretty boilerplate, and we're just approving the plat from September 4, 2025. So, happy to answer any questions that the board has. Staff is recommending approval of this.
Questions, gentlemen, ladies?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the lot. So, driving around there this weekend, I was trying to understand whether they're incorporating Kohl's in the 7-point-something acreage and the other two-tenant facility. But I was trying to understand, how is that handled for the remainder of north of their parking lot area that they're including? So, the 7-point, whatever it was, is going to include Kohl's and that parking lot. But there's, right north of it, is more parking lot. So, does that mean we are assuming that the owner of the town center, Beaver Creek Town Center, or the applicant is going to be adding additional circulatory paths between the breakup of the lot, the existing parking lot next to Kohl's, and the other part of the lot that's not included, which also feeds Kohl's? And so, I just wondered if we're adding circulatory elements because of what this applicant is asking to do?
No, and I can't speak to if Kohl's is going to take sole ownership of it or if it's just something that the Beaver... I mean, it's a quest from Beaver Creek Town Center, so I'm not sure if... What the future plans are, but...
We would not, in effect, then be forcing them into however they want to use the lot, the parking lot part, not Kohl's.
Sure.
Forcing them into additional circulatory elements, that they would come back to us and say, you're now making us add this two-way traffic right away between the two lots, the existing lot and the one north, and we expect you, city, to bear that expense?
No, they would be held to the same elements that they were approved under that specific site plan at that time, so...
That was my only question, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that whole area is a... Regardless of the lot split, it still is a big PUD. And that can't be messed with without coming before planning commission, including messing with the parking lots.
That's good to know. I was more concerned that the Beaver Creek Town Center, in this case, would come back to us and say, we are causing a change in how the lot is laid out that we then bear the expense for because of the approval. And I just want to prevent an unnecessary or unknown city expense.
Do we need to do anything with like cross-access easements or anything like that?
I don't think so, no. I think it's accounted for, so...
Once again, that cross-access easement is an umbrella to the whole PUD.
That's my understanding, yeah.
You can't mess with that without changing the PUD. And that would probably be a major mod.
Right.
Further questions, gentlemen, ladies? Okay, I need a motion and a second, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case S25-6 with the three attached conditions.
I have a motion.
Second that.
And I have a second. And if we can read the roll, please, ma'am?
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and being fresh out of agenda items, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I second that.
And we'll do that by general consensus, and we are adjourned at 7:02. Thank you, folks. Thank you, staff.